Start out with the opening prayer. Sam, would you like to?
Sure. Let's all come before tonight and say thank you for your love and mercy and grace that you may do for us today. Or we ask you to completely guide us and join us together. Brand new council and new commissioners who help us to come together as one unit to work together for this county, bring us back together, Lord, under your guidance, your guidance on them. Lord, we just thank you for everything you're doing. Thank you for our first responders. Thank you for the county highway. Absolutely excellent job on all parts of all of them during this snowstorm. We give them the praise they deserve for what they do and just please forgive us, Father, where we fail in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to make sure they sign in and takes us down to the election of officers. Open the nominations for president.
I'm going to make a motion that we nominate Polly as the president.
I'll second that. I make the motion, the nomination, be careful.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Polly, yours.
Hi, thank you. I appreciate you guys and I will do my very, very best. So next come the nominations for vice president.
I make a motion to nominate Anton for vice chair.
I'll second that.
I make a nomination. I make a motion, nomination be closed.
Second. All those in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the approval of minutes.
I make a motion, there was one correction I found, I think I couldn't hold your attention.
Yes.
Other than that, I make a motion to just nominate this president.
The one, let's see, I circled it. One, there was one, okay, where did it go? Oh, where we made a motion to authorize the auditor and president and designate a county council member, it's got three O's.
Oh.
Got that.
Yeah.
Nick caught that one.
He caught.
I'll second, as corrected.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried.
How, and what was the vote count?
He was not here, so abstaining.
Was it five to one?
Yeah. Five to one abstention.
You heard about the budget, yes.
All right, let's move on to the 2025 budget approval. The financial review, want to take us through that? Sheila? No?
Okay. It was a very long week, week and a half to get numbers and things pulled together and actually Polly and Anton and I, all three, were working on it Sunday afternoon with DLGF, our state people, to get these finalized. There were a few cuts, they didn't have numbers on a couple of things, didn't import correctly, it was on their half, not ours. But after it was all said and done, other than there was an amount cut from the commissioner's budget, help me here guys, I can't remember, there were adjustments made in some of the salary ends of things and the highway, who wasn't on the list to begin with because of their system, wasn't going to get a penny, but they ended up getting everything they applied for. So that was the biggest relief that afternoon. Right now, as it stands, we're good to go. We want to remind everybody, please try to stay within your budget. Additional appropriations are going to be extremely limited and if any of you haven't been paying attention to the legislative conversations that are going on, it is probably, if any of them are passed, going to be detrimental to the county. So we need to watch every penny that is being spent and keep an eye on the legislative and support where you can for the changes not to happen.
Do you want to talk about the AIC, I mean, or Anton, the upcoming February?
Yeah, there is a legislative conference that the Association of Indiana Counties is putting on here on the fourth and fifth of February. And so if you are a county official, make sure to attend this or try to figure out a way to get to this and participate. There's going to be a lot of discussion and a lot will happen between now and then too, so there'll be some more information to share and developments. But this is the session where the legislators are wanting to fulfill their commitment to overhaul the tax structure in the state. And although that may sound popular to a lot of folks, it's not for us because we have a county we need to operate and services we need to provide. And some of the changes being proposed could hamper our ability to do that. So it's very important to be engaged this year and keep very close tabs on this and also communicate with your state officials.
The legislative breakfast is coming up too. I think that's important for everybody that can.
The last Saturday of this month, yes. Legislative breakfast will occur, that's where some of our state officials will be and that's a good opportunity to ask questions as well, kind of engage with them, so.
Where is it at?
Oh, it's at the Owen Valley Christian Fellowship, the, the.
That's legislative breakfast.
Oh, it's downtown Indy at the Hyatt. Yeah, yeah.
I'll scan it in and send out an email to everybody and if you want to go, just let me know. We do have one correction we do need to make tonight on probations. When they came to us last year to give you their initial amounts, obviously they were giving estimated amounts that they were going to get, the state, actually those were less than that. Natasha has given us the numbers where they need to go, so I need a motion to adjust and reduce the two different funds that those were coming out of.
Is there a motion? Someone I want to make a motion to?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we give Sheila the permission to go ahead and adjust.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Verl, seconded by Anton. Any questions?
And just for clarification, I don't think it involves probation's budget, but it's the corrections budgets, yeah, which are state, kind of state determined, so.
All right, all those in favor? Motion carried. Okay.
Financial review, should have a copy of your, I did it ending 12/31 so you can see what all of the notices were. You did end up with $5,390,000 in your county general fund, which is a good number to start off the year, but again, need to watch and make sure you're not overspending or giving additional appropriations. The year-end transfers, Polly, I put it in your green folder.
Okay.
This is all of the transfers that I ended up having to do to get everybody out of the rut. This is the loud printout of it, this is the 30th and the 31st days worth of work to go through every single fund. There were only two that I couldn't get out because I couldn't transfer from one fund to the other and we'll probably get written up for it and it's minor, I don't want to say anything's minor getting written up, but in the meantime, I did get all the transfers and additional appropriations entered, everything by the end of the year, so we're good to go. State Board of Council is still here doing their audit, we're hoping Wednesday's the last day they're here, they're finishing up on a few minor things. Anton had the pleasure of working with her this morning and coming up with, they're asking everywhere, they're on every single budget in every single department and she's been very thorough this year, so, but we're hoping Wednesday's our last day, so.
Yeah, and I think it's important, just for purposes of the public, you know, when we say we're being audited, this is a part of a normal process for a unit of government and it's always a little bit delayed and in this case, they're doing three years, 21, 22, and 23. They normally do two years at a time, but they were behind in some respects, so they're doing three years and, and you know, nothing's ever going to be perfect and there may be some findings just that are technical in nature, you know, like I know in the past there's been times where it boils down to, you know, two different signatures on documents and, you know, or, you know, certain type of keeping of a record and, and it doesn't mean there's any wrongdoing or anything of that nature, it's just a part of the accounting process and, and being transparent. So we welcome the audit and I know Sheila can't wait for this to be completed because this will cover a good chunk of the time that she's been auditor and she, she would feel much more comfortable, I know, having that audit complete. So just want to make sure that's put out there.
Let's move on to our public hearing. I hereby open the public hearing for the additional appropriation request for the Sheriff's Department.
So this is following up on. This is following up on the proposal we took care of concerning the road deputies and there was a cost to that. Now, the 270 is actually the entire cost across multiple funds, it's not the cost to 1170, so we don't need that much. In Sheila's document, there was a breakdown of the three different funds and if you don't mind me taking a look at that real quick. Fund 1,000 is the general fund and I think for that, since that's dealing with police retirement and that's always kind of a year behind, we're probably best to not do anything until we know what that will be, you know, let them tell us what the new dollar amount is. So I don't necessarily think we need to do anything with that now or maybe even this year for that matter, but 1237 is the opioid fund. We do have a position that's funded out of that. It's a local fund, right?
Yes.
So as far as advertisement, we.
Still have to approve it because it's a salary.
Did we advertise for that one as well or was it just 1170? Okay.
That one you don't have to, it just has to be approved.
Okay. So I would suggest that we take action on that so that she can adjust that appropriation in that fund. And then 1170, of course, is the biggie and that's what's been advertised here, but we only need, we don't need any more than 200,000 for that. So if anybody entertains an additional appropriation, I would suggest up to 200,000 out of that fund.
Does the public have any comment on that? If there's none, do I have a motion to what, advertise, I mean, not advertise, this is to, we've already advertised, to approve?
To approve about 200,000 from 1170.
Make that a motion, Nick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Verl. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried. I hereby close the public hearing. All right, old business, jail project update, and Ryan, you want to go ahead and?
Yes. So this was mentioned in the commissioners meeting regarding our fuel and how we are, we get all of the invoices for all the fuel for all the departments that utilize the tanks that we utilize. We're asking that that be taken away from us because my secretary, it's a lot of work for her, she's having to get the invoices from all the departments, get the reimbursements from the departments and it ends up being a nightmare for her. If you know Donna, she is a hard worker, but she's overworked and underpaid, so we're trying to alleviate this and put this all back into one location versus multiple locations trying to pay and then you're having to ask for money. It's what should have been done a long time ago. I believe, I believe the commissioners agree, it was brought to their attention in the last meeting and, and they've been presented with this as well. But it's basically giving Sheila permission to take that fund, that fund line for us, that line item out of our budget and puts it into the commissioners.
So who all, besides your department, if you can just state for the record, who all uses that that's not you?
EMS uses it, health department uses it, veteran services uses it, prosecutor's office uses it. Jack uses it, EMA. Building department.
Assessor.
Assessor. Maintenance, yes, there's another one. And we end up dealing with all of them, so.
Okay.
Perhaps to be consolidated into one place, the commissioners, and in all honesty, all of vehicles in the county belong to commissioners anyway, it's what makes sense, they don't belong to us.
Yeah, and is, and is there a code that these, they enter or is it just a call-in or, I know there's a device, but.
You enter your PIN code, then you select your commission, vehicle number, sorry, your vehicle number and, and then you enter the mileage and then it goes to that agency, that vehicle's assigned to that agency.
Okay. And then, so if I'm, and I'm going to pick on Jack because he's here in front of me. So if he goes to fuel up, he has a code that he enters and then the record shows what he used. Is there, does, wouldn't that just automatically connect through on the record-keeping that his department used that and?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we, that's what we get the invoice for that bill.
Okay.
That comes to, well, we're supposed to get it, most of the time they don't bother giving it to us anyway. Then we get it and then we have to turn around and, and I guess Bill Jack, so to speak, and all the other agencies to give us what that general line item, so that we can pay.
You're performing that billing function, if you will.
Yes, that's a lot of extra steps.
My only concern, I like the idea of the efficiency. My concern is that, you know, this would require a shift of added cost to the general fund that's not there now. So how do we work through, if we take it out of yours, I guess, are you talking the money part or are you talking the, the accounting and paperwork part?
Both.
Both. So the money part's got to be, it's got to be budgeted somewhere. So if we take your budget and only do your part, we should have a good idea what that dollar amount would be. Whatever's left, we'd have to figure out where to put that. Now, we already know that, I think like in the line item for EMA, there is a fuel line there, so that's already there. EMS has a fuel line they're paying from, so we'd have to have.
All eight of them have fuel expenses in their budgets, so we would just take what is in each of those eight budgets and transfer it into the specific line item in the commissioner's budget.
Transfer it?
Yes.
But can we keep the appropriation where they're at? Because we don't want to take EMS out of EMS's levy and add it to the general. There's, you know, there'd be a shift there that we, we've not contemplated. Because like general fund is easy, because if, if EMA, it's already in the line item, then that's already there and that's done. But like building department is in a separate fund that.
If you remember in council, when we were doing budgets with all of the Toshiba, we moved everybody's Toshiba line items to the commissioners' fund. Be the same, would be the same process to take out of those and put in there. We could maybe do like six months at a time, kind of see where the average is, but if any of those don't use what was budgeted, it rolls over into their cash balances. So I could see where maybe EMS would be a little bit different than those out of the general fund or the building in them, but usually there's transfers or additional appropriations for, for some of the others.
Because I think in, in the ones that are already general, like veterans, prosecutor, EMA, assessor, and maintenance, they already have fuel line items in those budgets. EMS is probably the biggest user of all this and I would want to keep their appropriation in EMS, I wouldn't want to take that out.
I wouldn't want to use any cash that wasn't necessary because he doesn't always spend what's in his fuel, it just depends on the year and that, that's your bigger levy fund budget.
I think.
Anton?
Yes.
If I could add something here.
Yeah.
The line item that I paid that out of is not strictly fuel.
Right, yes, that's right. It's a little bit of a broader thing.
Anything truck-wise, so.
Yeah, but at least it's there, it's a part of that and it's not, not accounted.
And I'm not sure Vet Services has anything in their budget for that.
I would like to see us continue to work on this idea. I think, I don't think we can really make a informed decision with a plan tonight, but I'd like to see us work on one because we need to make sure we identify all the users, come up with some approximate dollar amounts, figure out where they're budgeted now and where they could possibly be moved or not, and then kind of go from there, come up with an actual plan of action.
The sheriff's department does a really good job at it, I like it right there.
Well, that's good to know. Okay, I see where you went with that. Yeah, yeah, good, good one. But yes, and then, you know, like we also have done at the end of the year, because you've been short, is we take the fuel reimbursement fund and pay the gap or the deficit. And so then, you know, how does that end up being utilized? It may not have as much in it then because if we're not then going to have it reimbursed, because it doesn't need to be, then that money, we need to, we just need to chart that out and make sure that we have an actual plan of action, I think, before we change anything.
How did it land in the sheriff's department's lap anyway?
The fuel tank used to be at the sheriff's office by the jail, since it was on our property, then it kind of just fell into the lap of the sheriff's office.
This is why all the fuel kept track of it, it's a function.
Yeah.
Now we have a system to.
So just by virtue of location and, and the reporting, it just, that's the way it was, you know. And it doesn't mean that it has to be that way forever, but I do think that whatever change is done, we, there're just, there're several moving parts here, we just need to make sure we have all of that accounted for. That's just my opinion on it.
Did your secretary keep, keep these department separated in her books?
She gets, she gets the bill for how much it costs to fill the tanks. She then in turn, since Fuel Cloud will say which department got how much fuel they, they took out of the tanks, then she will, I guess, kind of like bill them, I guess, so to speak.
Well, see, she could, she could tell them about what we needed for the year probably on each department.
Yeah, that would be valuable data.
Yeah, it would.
It'd be nice to see those numbers or some kind of an average, you know, over the last couple of years perhaps, so we really do know how much Jack uses. But yeah, I mean, I like the idea.
Yeah.
There's got to be a simpler way.
There's got to be a way.
She could tell us both.
Yeah. And if it makes her, it frees up some of her time, which is very valuable, that's, that's a very helpful thing.
She spends hours on this.
Yeah.
But she's going to put extra hardship onto Sheila's office at the same time.
It's departments that don't pay when they get that bill, that we're back and forth with.
Trying to track that down and, yeah.
And cross-referencing back with Donna and.
Sheila, Jack.
Now, there's another component to that as far as adding users and doing the administrative and that, are you dumping it all, Ryan, or adding new users and the stuff that Matt does?
He does that.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, are you sending it all to the auditor or?
I mean, that's, that's pretty simple, I don't, I can keep doing that just as easily as it takes a couple of seconds, as long as I'm notified and employed, but it's taking time.
That's a good question though and something we want to at least identify in the plan, that that'll stay this way or someone else will take it or, you know, and it may be, it may be such depending on what the final solution looks like, it may be that you don't need to keep doing that, it's better to do it out of another office or something, so.
You give it.
Okay.
You also need to consider who's going to order fuel if it comes out.
Yeah.
Diesel's pretty simple because I take care of all that because we're the ones that use diesel, but gasoline, I think is an issue. Because they keep your. We don't really order it, they just top us off, they come home like every week, they come every, every month.
Just a part of the service?
Well, they're supposed to come every month.
Got it. And, and then, that's a good point, of the diesel fuel, I don't see anybody else, is the maintenance truck regular? Okay, so the only, and Sheriff's Department has zero diesel.
Yeah, we've got, we've got two Hummers.
Well, very light, if any. So yeah, you know, you could really, you already have a very clear separation on fuel right there. And so diesel, it could be that his part, he does the ordering and he's got the records for it and it's out of his budget, so it kind of makes sense to leave that part there. And then if there's any gas like your other vehicles, then that would be something separate. But, you know, these kind of things could be worked out, just needs a little time.
What, what company do you guys get out of?
It's Mid, was, yeah, Keystone.
Keystone.
Which we had a lot of problems with Keystone as well. They, we had, one day they didn't fill the tanks up because somebody was on vacation and our guys literally could not get gas.
Oh, my.
They are supposed to bring the invoices to us when they fill them up, they throw them in the box outside and it's weathered, you can't read the invoices.
I, we get, we deal with Keystone with our farm and yeah, I'm having the same problem with them, so.
The only problem I've had with my home is they like to come like two days before Christmas, but. I guess they have a process to like.
And the pricing and the plan or the contract, the commissioners have negotiated that part, is that correct?
Yes, I don't.
Okay, so that's already been done there.
We're going to be, we're going to be looking at the fuel.
Got it, got it.
Okay. Because I know we get a statement, when we get our statement, at least with our farm, is, I mean, they've got diesel and gas on, but I don't know whether they would, would they separate it out? I mean, I don't know, something to think about.
Thanks for bringing it up.
We'll get that fixed one way or the other. All right. Jail project update, we did have a RDC public hearing, we passed the resolutions and that's, that's the last we've heard of it so far. We do have the environmental study, so I was wondering what's the council's mind with me? So, I was wondering what's the Council's mind with me, me or someone connecting with USDA and regarding the loan and what procedure that would be?
Yeah.
Just look into it?
Yep.
Okay.
So, the land, it's not, you know, that part has not physically changed. It's just the process has started then to work on that part. Okay.
Very long, long process. Okay, ARPA funds obligation filed. Sheila?
Got everything filed, but at the end of the year, as we were required, $190,988.31 went to, for the obligated for the radio project.
Can you tell me that number again?
Yeah.
We have, we are still drawing interest, but we did not have to and do not have to report the interest. So, this particular, the month of December, we got $788 more in interest. So, that can continually build and we can bring it back to the pool if needed for the project. In that process, we also had received, when the ARPA funds come along, we had also received the, what they call the L.A. TCF funds, which was, again, it was another $100,000 that was given. We did not have to report that. It can be used for anything in the county. It doesn't matter if it's regular local projects. So, that $100,000 could go towards your radio project. It's there to be able to, again, you don't, you don't have to say what you're doing with it. I have to give an annual report how much was spent, but you don't need...
What was the fund number for that one?
$89.53.
And so, we, you know, from the time we concluded our December meeting to now, we went from a $400,000 figure down to $190,000. Now, that, that kind of leaves a bad taste in my mouth. But I understand that there was evidently some previous obligations that were either not remembered or not down on paper. What, what, what happened to that money? Was it spent on other things?
The funds were approved along the way. We went through, we looked through what the original amounts that was approved. It came to it. When we got to the point of how much was left in there, the Commissioners made the motion at their December 6 meeting, I believe it was, that everything was to go toward the radio project except for what was owed for the one highway project or the one highway expense. I did not include that in it when I gave you guys the total. So, it was higher than the $190,000 that was there. It has not been spent twice. There's not been anything that has been spent. Matter of fact, I even had this head of the state board accounts go through the funds with me, so.
So, we're square and accounted for.
I didn't include it because of the way that they motioned that everything was to go to or toward the radio project. So, I didn't include that highway amount that had been approved earlier in the amounts.
Okay.
I also looked through again that $100,000 in one of the meetings. The Commissioner said the future building fund, which currently has $167,000 in there. Between the future building fund, the fund I was just telling you about and what rolled over, there is $458,000 in just those three funds. And Sheri had related that she could use her, one of her funds to put toward it as well, so there would be more funds there. So, you're about halfway there. I would suggest maybe either a committee or a couple of people looking into, what are some of the other options that you have to come up with that total? $801,000, I believe, was the project owed that was needed. Is it $801,000?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, we've got stuff to work with. It's maybe a little different structure, but we're fortunate to have what we have. And it's an important project. You know, we probably would want to use the balance, maybe take that from Edit, for instance, to cover the cost, just as an idea. But we'll need to, we'll need to hammer down some kind of a financial plan once the technical parts of the project are vetted, so.
So, do we want a committee to look into that or do we want to just...
I don't know if we, I don't know if we need a separate committee. We already have, the Commissioners are already working on this. There already is, has been a committee. I think we just need, need to be able to be, have the communication on it, on the timing and the dollars, and have enough time in order to come up with, you know, the difference, so.
Not to interrupt, but back in our first Commander meeting, and most of them are here, we're reestablishing the 911 advisory board.
Okay.
This is their decision. Because, and they met today, is that correct, everybody? So, and they're all on board with this project. I know it's some of the Commissioner's decision as well, but having these people on board is what's going to be the salt to this project, because they know what we need better than the Commissioners do. So, whatever they come up with, and I said they met today, whatever decision they come up with, they're going to let you know and let us know so we can come to figure out what we need. Because, and I don't want to speak for the radio project at all, but I don't think the $800,000 is going to get it. That's just the money, I'll let somebody else speak for that, so.
So, as far as timeline of having a, kind of a final recommendation, I guess, or something where we're to that point where, yeah, we're ready to go. This, this is what, what would be, this is what's going to work. Are we talking February, are we talking April?
We're talking June, July, complete.
June, July, okay.
Complete.
As far as the decision of what the 911 Board's going to support, that was up to about 3:15 this afternoon.
Okay.
So, Matt can tell you all about it.
Yeah, do you want, do you want to, are you prepared to give a report to us or do you want to do that?
That's what our next, next item.
But Matt, you're a Broadway Terry back there.
Maybe that's a good segue into it, right?
He's coming up with it.
Welcome, Matt. Got a favor to ask him here, for...
Sheila, what do we have as far as the balance in our Lit Edit Fund? Thank you.
They're the same.
You said 1 million what?
You want to explain it, Matt? You want me to go through it?
I'll let you give the details.
Forget it.
Sometimes he, I don't understand what he's saying a lot of times because it's technical stuff that's way above my pay grade. There's some options that were brought up for this, for this new system. And a lot of it comes down to which agencies are going to be using it, whether it's just fire, which, which right now, the kind of the meat and potatoes of the project is the fire radio. Like, that's, that's our must-have. So, when we're talking the, the fire radio coverage and the issues we're having there, that's where you're getting that $801,874. With some options that can be added to the system that would also cover law enforcement channels as well or law enforcement coverage as well. There's, it's, it's been this way forever. We've just kind of learned how to kind of deal with it, I guess. The current radio system we use now, the state 800 megahertz system, it works, but it's, it's lacking. I mean, we're, we're a lot of terrain in our county. We have a lot of dead spots, a lot of areas we can't get out. The majority of that issue is with our portable radios, the way radios that we wear. The mobile radios have a little more power, they get out better. But once you get out of your car, which obviously is a, is a more vulnerable, vulnerable spot to be in, whether you're out in an area that has no coverage or you walk inside a building, when you hit that radio, it just makes a bong noise. So, with this system, we can add, and this is where Terry can explain the technical details on that. We can add to the system that will, for us personally, a lot of our existing equipment that we have is compatible with this, so it would be minimal for us as far as our equipment goes. We wouldn't have to switch radios, we'd have to reprogram a couple. But for the most part, we would be all right with it, so. But that would also count for Spencer PD, because they use it as well. And there's, there's dead spots around in Spencer, too, that we run into. So, that's where the additional cost is at. And that basically goes from one channel to three channels for the 700 megahertz system. That still leaves us compatible. It does a couple of things for us specifically. It leaves us compatible still with other agencies around us. We can still communicate with them on the state system. But we have in every vehicle right now, we have two radios. We have our law enforcement radio and then we have our fire radio, fire and EMS, so we can communicate with them. It's two separate systems. This system would join those, so we would no longer have to put two radios. We wouldn't have to issue two portable radios to staff. It would just be one radio that would do it, so.
You covered it very well.
I covered it.
With the 801, is that going to take care of your needs?
No, that's, so, so I would say the $800,000 is a, is a need. It's a must-have. It's a must-have. That is going to fix our fire issues with our current coverage right now with our fire radios. Now, the remaining part, I would say it's, it's not as immediately needed, but it's, it's something that we definitely need to do. I mean, we have, we have a coverage issue as well. It's not as bad as fire. But that's something also down the road. Of course, like everything else, you're going to have 6% to 7% increase. You know, if we were to do it next year, things are going to cost a little bit more, so. But it's something that can be looked at for a possibility down the road to put these two channels in as well, so.
Man, I'm sorry if I turned the page over, I saw it. But I didn't, I don't know that I saw it, but we're looking at almost $1,300,000 to bring the Sheriff's Department on board.
Correct.
Does that cover everybody?
Yes, that would be everybody.
Sheriff's, EMS, 911, all the fire?
Well, I think it allows us to talk together on the radio system.
Yeah.
Rather than the two we do now.
Right.
Yeah, because it's interoperable. And more importantly, it has maximized coverage. Because the state only has one tower. You know, they rent from that Crown Castle Tower. And there's no plans to, there will never be another tower, okay, in the county. I was really surprised when I saw the propagation reports. But the reason for three channel is, on a trunk-type system, one channel is used for control purposes, like, you know, that's what you hear when you mic up a radio. The other two, they don't know which one they're on because you just stick up talk groups at that point, just like the state does. That's the reason is there's minimal transition. But it gives you the maximum coverage, gives you complete interoperability, and more importantly than anything else, you have complete control over your own system, which means you have priority. I mean, Putnam County, who has maximized coverage in that county up there, is going to jump off of the state system because the prison takes up too many channels.
And we've had that problem in the past with snow events. Snow events and state trucks, things like that. When it gets busy, we'll get busy signals that can't get out because they're using that state system too, so. Now, we can, and we can still use that state system.
You will.
It's not that we're getting rid of that op, because if you recall, when Sheriff Hobbs took office, we were on a completely different digital radio system at that point. A former sheriff had purchased that because there were not enough channels here in Owen County and we could not get out with, with snow events. So, we were sold this system that ended up being a, it's proprietary to one brand. But it completely isolated us from talking to any other agencies right next door to us. We couldn't talk to the state troopers that were in our county working. So, when Sheriff Hobbs took office, we switched immediately back to 800 megahertz and they did eventually add a couple of channels at some point that helped the system situation, but it doesn't help with coverage, it just helped the busy signals out.
So, Terry, looking at the December 6 dated proposal and then looking at this one, the difference is in that additional items. And there's, it's the same subject matter, but they, there's some different costs and descriptions. Can you just walk through what changed?
Good question, Anton. What I did is, I, when I did additional on that one sheet before, I had one additional VHF channel to put in. Because we couldn't rely on utilizing anything outside the VHF or fire. And obviously, when there's a structure, fire or something else, that one channel's going to be completely crowded. So, I took that out because based on the 911 Board's recommendation. And we already had a cost factor for a three-channel from all vendors, okay? So, I plugged that in instead, because you don't need more than one channel in the VHF if you have control of your own public safety. Because that radio, they will utilize part of these three channels too, okay? That's, that's the reason.
So, originally, it was just one.
Yes.
You're proposing three.
Yeah, it was one, yeah, it was one 700, one VHF. I took out VHF and then went from one 700 to three.
Okay.
Because you have to have a minimum of three to be able to have what's called a trunk system, okay?
Terry, does this change the contractor?
No, no, it's still the same contractor. And I know, I've been in contact with Kenwood out of Irving, Texas. It's EF Johnson. EF Johnson is the one that actually made the Atlas system that you're contemplating getting, okay? Not Kenwood. And I've been in contact with them because no matter who the contractor is, I put Kenwood or EF Johnson on the hook at the same time. Because I want the mother company. It's their system in the end. Yes, the installer is the local radio shop or whoever radio shop we have here, okay? But it's their product and they don't want this. So, I've actually already talked to the, actually, I talked to the CEO, Dewayne Anderson, okay? So, they know about your project, okay?
Is there any annual costs that we're going to need to be planning for here? Or, I mean, there's a lot, obviously, a large upfront project-oriented cost.
That's another excellent question. This is not a core system, so it's not like if you went out and bought a Motorola Core system that you have to pay an annual cost. It's called an SUA.
I see.
This one does not. I do recommend, though, Anton, that after it's had substantial completion, which won't be until the middle of summer, okay? You have one year, like, parts and warranty, you know, so to the summer of 2026. After that, so when somebody's budgeting this year, they might want to look at doing a maintenance agreement, okay? Doesn't have to be with this vendor. I don't necessarily recommend a single vendor. You know, you put it out on the street and saying, hey, give me a cost factor. But that would be up to, I guess, then I won't board if you want to do that, okay? But it's something to look into.
Do you have any idea what that might be?
They can be as low, you have three sites. They can be as low as $30,000 a year, could be as much as $120,000 a year, okay? Depends on how much. See, part of the, the system has updates on the software. That's free. That's something that EF Johnson already does. But the issue becomes is that it's not like the lightning strikes or something like that, equipment wearing out. That insurance covers some of that stuff. But what this is, is actually, they will always monitor the system as a third party. That's what you're paying for. So, I would always recommend that you go to the lower end to get that third-party monitoring, okay? Which would be closer to the 30 grand a year, okay?
Hey, Derek?
Yeah.
We got a year of parts, you said the warranty is three-year. Is there any way, is there any way we could get, with the price that we're spending here, is there any way we could get a longer warranty?
Yes.
That's included with this price to say, look, we want to spend this kind of money. Can we get a three-year warranty instead of a one-year warranty?
And that's a very good question, Sam. On this, the way I would do it for the warranty, the contractor... warranty, the contract ends up being with the radio vendor that was awarded, or is going to be awarded this. The warranty, though, needs to go back to the mother company that they warranted that, if that makes sense. Okay? So, part of the CSA, which is called the Communication Service Agreement, the contract that I write up for you, will be with ECS who is doing this. But the warranty extension will have Kenwood, EF Johnson, involved with it. Okay? But yes, three years is completely what I would expect. Okay?
That brought to you by Dave Riss.
I mean, what about when the radios, if you have trouble with the radios, who, what would that pertain to if we had to replace the radios in, say, three years?
I guess it would depend on why we were replacing the radios.
I mean, do they don't need to update their fixtures?
Oh, I wouldn't think so. The radios that we have now, that we're running, just off the top of my head, I'm thinking are 13 years old.
And they got the new stuff.
And we've got the new stuff, yeah. That's legit. Then there's, then there's another wave of radios that were prior to those that are still very common, that a lot of people are using. Those are running 20 years.
That's the XTS.
The XTS, yeah.
The, what Matt's talking about, his, he doesn't have a problem with his cash radios, other than if knobs fall off or something else, okay? It's the fire radios have always been the issue. And so, in that first cost factor I gave, 801,000, that had to have some subscribers in it and updating software and firmware in them. But for the law, no, there's, you're just carrying it over to your own system, basically.
So, if we had to replace radios, and it's not a, you know, manufacturer warranty issue or something like that, I mean, that's, it's what we do now. If we have to replace them, we find the money to replace them. We're doing that right now, every year. When we, because a lot of, we've still got some EF Johnson radios in our cars that are, gosh, those, they were the first set of 800-megahertz radios the county got. And a lot of people are running those still. So, we're trying, but those are going to be obsolete here soon. So, we're trying to replace those as, as we go. So, every year.
And we do budget.
Try to buy one or two radios to replace older units. And then if something breaks, you know, that has to be replaced, then, you know, we, we're not, we're not replacing the entire, you know, all of our radios at once, which is, you know, which would be detrimental to our budget, you know? We find the money to replace one or two radios when needed, so.
Okay, that's good.
In addition, what Matt was saying about having some of the older radios, the EMS has never replaced any of our 800-megahertz radios. So, the next time that the state does their upgrade, our radios are going to be obsolete. So, that means that we would have to, we're going to have to purchase 800-megahertz radios. With this system that we're talking about, I can use my VHF radio, and it will bridge over.
It'll bridge over.
Be the system. It'll bridge over into the 800-megahertz drill.
That's great.
So, I mean, that would be a savings there down the road whenever this next wave of radios comes out.
And that could be as early as 2026.
Yeah, 2026 is when the state thinks they're going to upgrade the system. It's whatever money they have.
It's a big upfront cost now, but you got potential for big savings on the backside of it. It's just one way to have to go and spend it out and save it later.
Yeah.
Better area.
Yes, yes. I just, Mike said. I can't stress it enough. When I saw the propagation, that's the reason I asked Matt at the meeting today. I, I can't believe the lack of coverage you have in your county on the state system. That, that's not proper. Now, I understand. It originally was based off of a mobile radio in a vehicle. We used to call it Project Hoosier Safety because it was for the state police. They do leave the vehicles, I've been told. But anyway, but anyway, no, come on. I was laughing about that. But anyway, so, but not off of a, like Jack was even saying during the meeting, a six-watt radio. Six-watt radios actually got based off, and Matt explained that to you. So, but, yeah, Sam's right. It's a one-time deal. You got to figure if you can do it or not. Okay?
And from the commissioner's standpoint, and we talked about this in the meeting, we're 100% behind this. You'll be in sheriff eight years. I know what we went through and stuff like that. Public safety, we talked to a lot of the council, public safety is our number-one goal. I mean, that's for everybody countywide, and the Joinee counties as well. It goes, you know, we interact with the Joinee counties. So, it is a lot of money, but I know for a fact that the commissioner is behind this 100%.
So, money. We need to think about money, right? And, and from a timeline standpoint, we should take some kind of action to advertise today.
Yeah.
For February's meeting. Because otherwise, we're going to be waiting a whole another month.
Right.
It's not going to work with this timeline that we're looking at here, which is fairly quick, by the way. It looks, they're, they're going to be able to roll, everything will be able to be, if, rolled out in that short timeframe.
It depends on the Atlas 4,500 and 8,100 repeater units, okay? So, right now, this is what I had a few days ago. If I go check it tomorrow, I, I don't know. Okay? They could add another month of this.
So, yeah, well, either way, we're in good shape there.
I know you asked for a draw schedule, and I apologize, Anton. I forgot to bring that with me.
Yeah, I think as long as we commit the overall, then as far as the timing of when money is physically needed, or when a claim is made, then that's, that happens.
Okay.
But I think upfront, we would want to be able to have some appropriation done and, on the books. So, so Sheila mentioned that we have the 199, the 19900 figure for ARPA.
ARPA and the 100,000.
100,000 from Fund 8953. So, that puts us at 290, 291. And then.
Commissioners mentioned the future building fund.
How much out of the?
You're going to have to remind me what did we mention?
What fund number?
Who said what?
Just in the overall conversation, it was places where money was possibly, would be able to come from. And it was fund number 4916.
4916.
There's, I can't borrow any place. 160,000.
Now, is that from the storage unit?
Yeah.
That's, okay, that's, that's separate. We're going to go different.
Right.
That was a fund that I believe the air of commissioners during Donnie, Matt, Solson, Timber, and.
It's one-time money.
Yes.
Once it's used, it's gone.
Well, I know, I don't think, we discussed, we didn't discuss it in our first meeting, didn't we? But we didn't vote on it. So, the future building fund, that's 167,790.
167,738, 90.
We'll be having a meeting next Thursday. And I can't even say what we're going to commit. But we're, shut up, man. I can't say, I can't say what we're going to make or we haven't voted on. But we don't, you know.
Yeah, we get some kind of a dollar amount. I wouldn't drain it because that, I know in the past, that fund had been used when we did our courthouse remodel work. And we went office to office and prepared for courts, the second court, and it was very useful. I think it even, we utilized that for maybe the building across the street at some point. And we're going to continue to have some renovation needs and repair.
Yeah, we did. We got service.
Hate to zero it. But if you can come up with a dollar amount there.
Sheila, what, I mean, it's, you've got receipts in that fund for 30,400. I mean, where did that come, that future building fund? Under your receipts?
Yeah.
I mean, did that come in?
It would have had to come in in 2024 sometime. I don't know specifically for what that I can.
Double-check that, yeah.
How do you?
So, it's not like money that's just been sent there. There's something that came in last year.
That's a good one to check.
Yeah, because you only started out with 137,000. So, I'll check and see where the revenue is from.
And I'd interrupt you. Of course, I don't know all the incidents now yet. Our contract services, we didn't get the money we thought we was going to get this year, didn't we?
No, that was what was reduced by the state.
We didn't get.
Had advertised 500,000 in commissioners and council, and all the state ended up approving was 205,000. And that was switching the levy funds and adding to the general fund, so.
So, the council got 105,000. I can't remember what they, what we get.
Zero.
20 dollars.
Yeah, sorry. Well, and I'm being a little facetious, but.
There are 200,000 dollars you can have.
Yeah, yeah. And just to be clear on that, that's, that is not to be, that's not to be spent. It's just holding the, the property tax levy for the general fund. There's zero intention to spend that, and it should not be spent.
But for us, if we had got that money for contract services, it would have changed our, our events cycle. Now, we can get that money, so things are going to change for us.
Yeah, that, that again, was never to be used, anyway.
You'll get what amounts were needed for your other contracts and things you just didn't get.
The add-on for advertisement is not there.
Right.
And it never really was intended to be used.
It was mainly to give us flexibility.
Correct. And we needed it. It, it helped tremendously. But at any rate, the other is utilizing edit funds. You know, we have a decent cash balance there. And you could take the balance of what's needed from that and still have a pretty sizable amount left. So.
Well, the, okay, so you want to utilize the funds that have been discussed in advertising, and then the difference from the 1.85 million, whatever was in the lit, whatever we come up with the difference. Are you doing the 801,000, or are you doing the full 1 million?
Well, I guess that's a decision for now. I personally like the whole thing. Because to me, you're getting a lot better value for the dollars in this, making this investment. Because if we didn't do the add-on, my fear is that we would have paid good money as it was for just getting by. And then five, four or five years from now, we have an emergent need, and it's going to not cost us 491, 192. It's going to cost us a million dollars. I think that making the investment now is, is a good idea.
I agree.
But it's going to depend on the majority council decision on what limit you want to place on this project. So.
I make a motion, Anton, that we, we take the 1,293, 1,293,000, and put that into the workings for this project as the 801,000, as of the 801,000. I make that in the motion.
Motion made by Nick, seconded by Daniel. So, what your motion, just to clarify, is to spend the 1.2, I mean, 1,293,066, correct?
Yes, yes.
And we've got a second. Are there any questions on that?
Yes.
All right, are we ready for a vote?
Where does this money come from?
Well, this is just the motion at the moment to commit to the total project.
We commit, but with, from where?
Yeah, so, well, that, so then, we, we have, the one part that we last left with was the unknown of the future building fund. And if you want the easy way out, you can just use the edit for the balance. So, what was the balance in that fund as of the end of the year?
What, edit?
The edit fund.
1,850,083.
Okay. And we would need about 800 from that, if you did the whole balance. Now, you could also look at.
Are you including some from that future building fund, then?
Not particularly, but, you know, let's say if there's half or, you know, just 75,000 or something like that.
But here's the thing tonight, Anton. Do we need to, do we need to go that far? Do we just need to earmark some money to get started?
Well, we still kind of need to know where it's going.
Well, we start down that road.
Yeah, well, there's big toe in that. So.
We know the funds are there.
190,988.31 from ARPA. You have 100,000 from the OATC. So, those are guaranteed amounts.
We're going to just settle for discussion, 75,000 perhaps from the future building fund.
4916.
So, yeah, 440, 441,000 is already through that.
And.
That kind of matches up with your option there. And then the balance would be about 800,000, about 850 that you'd need. Now, 911, you mentioned?
Sherry has kept saying when they were making the proposal that she could use out of one of her funds, which is the 1222 fund.
Okay.
And she is bringing in enough each month that that department is bringing in each up to make up for their, what their actual budget is. So, the cash that is in there currently would be able to be utilized toward it. And you would still be able to pay the budget. Just wouldn't have any.
Yeah, I'd be leery of using that, to be honest, from an operational standpoint. But if you did take the other 850 balance out of edit, then that still leaves plenty in edit.
It leaves about a million.
Yeah. And our budget that we approved for that is.
What is?
Is, is on par. You know, we're not, there's no deficit. There's, there may be a little bit of a surplus operationally from what we set for 25. So, we're, we're going to spend a little less than what we're going to take in anyway. So, that cash balance will still be maintained after this purchase.
About what did we spend? 750,000 last year out of lit edit from IDO roughly? Where did we spend it?
About half of it is group health benefits. We also had our Community Crossings Grant match out of that. And then we had small, smaller amounts for economic development. And there are only like four line items in there. But that total we set for 2025 is pretty much on par with the revenue we anticipate to get in that for 2025.
Then I make a motion. Sounds like.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Do we?
Whatever it is.
You already said all that.
Oh, we haven't voted on it?
We just haven't voted on it.
My question's answered.
Okay, then let's take a vote.
So, I just got one more. I want to clarify all where this can come from. I mean, so we're talking 850,000 from lit edit, correct? And then the two, or the 19988?
From ARPA.
From ARPA. And then the 100,000?
From 8953.
And?
75, our future building.
And 75? Okay.
4916.
We'll discuss that future building fund next Thursday. I can commit enough over the, we'll put it out there and there.
Yeah, so that would be it. We're close. It's not quite. It still doesn't.
The only real concern is if you don't feel comfortable doing that chunk of money out of edit, you'd have to come up with some other offset. And, you know, you could take little bits and pieces from other places, but I mean, it wouldn't be significant enough.
It'd still be 77,078.
You know, you could take, you could use a little bit out of Riverboat, for instance, if you want to spread it out a little bit.
Two, that's what I was saying.
So, you could do your other 75 or whatever out of that.
So, do we just want, so right now, your motion is just to commit the full amount? And then we would come up?
To go for the, the three-channel instead of one channel.
Correct.
Commit the full amount, the.
Yes. Which we haven't took a vote on.
Right.
Okay.
So, do we have any other questions about this?
We have to have execs if I'm advertising.
Well, this motion is just to proceed for the record of the, the shape of the project. That's the only decision we're voting on now.
The scope of the project, yes.
All right, if there's no more questions on that, I call for a vote. All right, if there's no more questions on that, I call for a vote. Okay, now we need to figure out where it's coming from.
In our conversation, it sounded like we could earmark some money tonight. We have a healthy amount of money, we, we know we can cover this expense. Is it, do we want to make it happen tonight, or do we want to earmark this that we know we have this?
Well, we would have to, I mean, to be able to start the project, we would have to advertise for, at least a portion of, of it, so.
Well, I think we would have four hundred and twenty-one thousand and not, not look at the edit funds yet. There might be other areas we'll, we can pull some money out of and, and not pull it out of edit. But if we need to, we know we have it.
That's a good point. Because we're thinking about the draw and the timeline. You, you wouldn't probably need more than four hundred thousand anyway in the first, in the next month or two, right?
No, the big thing, Anton, is I always delay sending out a contract to the radio vendor until I know there's going to be.
Funding.
Funds for it, okay? Yes, the commissioners approved it, but, but you know, with this commitment, I mean, unless you guys feel differently, I feel comfortable enough to go ahead and send him the draft of the CSA, okay?
Well, then let's do that.
So that starts the process.
Yeah, so let's, let's then just use the things we know are for certain at the moment.
That's good.
And that's just simply the ARP money and the LT, LATCF money. That's going to give us two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars right out of the game. So, and if that's enough cash for this project's timeline to put us to at least March. We can then, we'll know a lot more in February and be able to fine tune the balance that's needed. We already committed to the whole project, so that part's on the record. But it's the timing and the financial transaction decisions that we're.
Yeah, your draw schedule, March would be some of your first receivables and that, or payables and that, yeah, it would be small.
Okay.
The largest part will be around May or June when it's coming to the fruition.
Well, I'm going to make a motion then that the auditor advertise the most recent complete balance of ARP money available.
You don't have to advertise them?
Oh, okay, well.
Either one of them?
Either one of them, okay, great.
Well, then, we're done, okay.
Patrick, do the, the ARPA had to be committed or obligated, so that was the, the contract or the resolution that you did. And then the LATCF, what did you spend it on? We just, I have to report any, I would report what we spent it, but you don't have to.
Okay, great.
Commissioners give, allow money from that future building fund, will that have to be advertised?
That will have to be advertised.
Should we make a motion that if they approve it, they can go ahead and allow her to advertise that?
I guess we could.
You want to make that first motion, Dan?
There we go.
There you go.
If they approve that money, then we go ahead and allow them to advertise that, so that can be.
That sounds good. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Anton.
Was it seventy-five thousand?
We don't know until every.
Whatever they, well, we need to, yeah.
Yeah, we just threw that number out there.
They said wait until the month, you know, if we go ahead and approve it.
So you'll have a figure after they make their decision?
At their meeting on the twenty-third, whatever, I can have it to the paper on the Friday. And, and it'll be advertised next week in enough time for your council meeting, so. Timeline revolves, how does they make a decision on the twenty-third?
All right, there's been a motion made, seconded, any more questions? All those in favor? Motion carry.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you all.
Glad we can.
When we get it, Dan, I'll call you with the cataract.
All right, let's move on to new business. The memorandum of agreement with DNR.
I promise we won't spend that much money while we're waiting. What are you guys just spent? Kind of bring you guys up to speed a little bit here, we're in the final phase of the Torrey Siren Project. And Dwight has been working tirelessly to get state DNR folks on track with us and, and put a siren in three different locations. I'm not going to say in Owen County, but in, on park property very close to Owen County. Would you like to kind of jump in there and?
Okay, like, like a lot of things, I, I was asked to get involved with the Siren Committee and they were looking, you guys were looking at putting in new sirens in different locations to improve coverage. One of the areas that needed coverage was near the park and off of Mcville Road, and you can correct me anytime if I'm wrong. And in the discussion, it seemed to make the most sense not to ask the county to pay for the siren that would be on park property and serve both the park and the campground plus areas of Concord and Mcville Road into your dead areas. It seemed more logical to try to get those with state funding. And rooted around for a long time, we finally came up with a funding source for it. And then the project grew in that Owen Putnam was identified as being an area without good coverage, as was Lieber. So we were able to, right now, we've got the funding to purchase the three sirens from the same company, E.
ECS.
ECS. And, and that's vital for us to be able to do this in a, a sole source bid where we're not actually going to bid it. We're going to use a sole source because it needs to integrate with your system. In short, we buy the equipment and it's going to become part of the county's system. And then there's just a few little details and maintenance and, and these kinds of things that I think we've gone all worked out. And what started out as an MOU, I think, has become an MOA, don't ask me the difference. But that's kind of where we're at. And now we need both the, I guess, the council and the commission to approve the MOA. And then that will basically set in motion the purchase of the sirens.
That's wonderful.
Our Siren Committee's been meeting about once a month, maybe not quite that much, for several months, I think, in time for a couple of years. And so.
And Bruce Hamlin, deserves a lot of praise here for driving this, he's a citizen that's been very passionate about this. And, and is someone that had been very involved in the very first project of getting, even having sirens in this county.
Nineteen, twenty years ago, he started in on me, he hadn't let up. So, but he's, he's fantastic. He beats every door down, looking for every nickel he can, he can find. So I printed my MOA out and it's still in my printer. So, Anton, I know you got one, it's, it's really, we're really not looking at much, if any, cost to the county. We were talking about maintenance and stuff and Dwight's worked it out where they're going to, they're going to take care of that. But you can't just go out and put a tornado siren out and it, and it work. It has to have the backbone, the structure, it's kind of like what you guys just spent the money on, the radio project. You know, you have to have the encoder, you know, you have to have, you know, the, the place that, that sets them off and, and, and all that stuff. And we've got the, we've got the system in place, so they're just going to be adding their sirens on to our system. And when comes time for batteries, they're going to take care of the batteries on, on those site, at those sites, those three sites. The maintenance agreement, they're going to, they're going to take care of the maintenance. May, we don't know all the details exactly how we're going to exactly work that out. But they'll probably pay a portion of the, the maintenance agreement that we, we currently have. So of course it'll go up when we add three sirens. But this, this agreement just kind of spells all the, everything out, but it's not so tight that we can't move around a little bit. Is that a fair way to put it, Anton?
Yeah, yeah, we have several layers of people that have reviewed this. And we've gotten this far, the fact that we've gotten to this point means it's in good shape, it's a good document.
It's been vetted by the Siren Committee.
Yeah.
And it's been run through DNR. And after you guys get done with it, I've already sent one copy to Sam, we'll get it in front of the commissioners and get this wrapped up.
I think this sounds like a win-win for the county.
Definitely.
I make a motion that we accept the MOA that has been presented to us by Jack White and his oversight, so I appreciate that.
Most amazing, is there a second?
My seconded.
Second by Steve, any other questions? All those in favor?
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, John.
And the names, those have been updated on that, the master copyright?
They will before, it goes before the commissioners, yeah. I was kind of in a, a little bit of a pickle there, we wanted to get it on your agenda.
Right, right.
But the commissioners hadn't had their meeting yet. And Dwight wasn't going to let it go another month, I don't think, so.
And you guys can understand this, the quotes that I've got for the three sirens expire on December thirty-fourth, or did expire on December thirty-first. And the cost is going to go up five percent. Five percent of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, you know, is a significant amount. And it's difficult to get, you know, then it's over, that's not part of this fund. Where, where do you go get that money? And, you know, that gets really difficult. So I was able to get EDS to commit to give us an extension until January thirty-first and hold their price, which has been great.
Fantastic, yeah.
It's still going to be close, once we wrap all this up. And then I've got to start, you know, trying to push through the sole source requisition. If it goes through sole source, we're all good.
So as far as signatures, though.
For another two-week extension.
Signatures, Jack, as. Okay. Do you need our signature tonight then?
No, I don't, let me take a look at it.
And then we're going to have a joint meeting anyway, and we could all sign it then. I just want to make sure we don't.
Is that joint meeting still on for the?
Sam, are you still wanting to have a joint meeting on the twenty-third? Yes.
So maybe, maybe we can have their part done.
Yeah, yeah, that document will be updated and ready for them on that date. The only required signatures are from DNR and the executive branch in Sheila.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you again.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dwight.
All right, on to the planning commission appointment.
I couldn't get you the one thing to council appointment.
I make a motion, I have not asked, Dan, could you be willing to take a appointment? I make a motion in weakness, Dan Brownie on that plan commission.
Motion made.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Burl. All those in favor? Motion carry. Thank you, Daniel. All right, commissioner review requests.
Sure, I forgot what you.
Want me to talk yet?
I know the, the first, the first thing is that bless our first meeting, last meeting. We all agree, made a motion to approve the resources, you can call them officer, advisor, or whatever you call them. Long overdue, we use that meeting.
I, I agree.
Some things we said and stuff, but it's an appointed position by the commissioners, but I, I want to reiterate something. I'm a little bit different, I guess, or a whole lot different. This is a joint venture, I don't care who's appointed who. If the council's not involved and don't know what's going on, it's not good for the commissioners. And likewise, you know what I'm saying? So I want your blessing with this to move forward with getting somebody hired. Now, we hired a county attorney, which is your county attorney. So he's working hand in hand. And he's going to work on this as well. He's, he's a wealth of knowledge about human resources and businesses and people and individuals, so we're kind of giving him the lead on this. But I know from the commissioner's standpoint, we want the council's blessing on this because it's going to affect everybody in this entire county group, employees, appointed people, elected officials. Right now, as you know, we have got two attorneys, Dana Kurstill, attorney, and he'll be done at the end of the month. But he is the human resources administrator at this time. The new attorney has made it perfectly clear that a county attorney will, does not need to be the human resources officer.
Correct.
And neither does the commissioners.
Right.
We're out, okay? Just because it's an appointed position, I want to make sure the council is fully involved and fully engaged in this. Input, ideas, goals, and stuff like that, as well as department heads, appointed peoples, we're going to bring the ideas together. But we're going to move on this like right now, because it's, something's got to happen. With that being said, that's where the cost of it is going to come from. We're going to have to get together and, and realize there's going to be an expense to this, and we're going to have to figure out what that expense is.
So you, at the moment, it's just an idea? And you're thinking about, are you thinking about doing a retainer for human resource functions, like through Farm, like, like legal, but HR? Or are you actually wanting to create a full-time position with a salary and benefits and what, what direction?
Well, the county attorney is working on that part, everybody's attorney.
Okay.
He's going to give us the pros and cons of both ways.
Okay, so an analysis is in, in process now, okay.
Well, what did we pay Lyle for? For, didn't we get Lyle to have a, to be our?
Human resource?
Yeah, human resource.
I, that, I, that I can answer, where I can answer you, I don't think so.
There is wording in the contract for that, but it's just the basics for like onboarding and bringing in new employees and overseeing the insurance portions of it.
So it's not really HR?
Time clocks and all.
That's part of the system that we have, but as far as HR duties, giving the employees somebody to go to.
Yeah, that's the big thing.
That is not part of the law.
And this human resources administrator is a word, will not only be able to engage with employees who's got issues and stuff like that. They're going to take over all the insurance, take that away from the auditor's office, so free of payroll. They're going to handle all that, they're going to handle all of the drug testing. We made a motion, and we're getting this worked up too. But right now, our, our, our health department does the drug testing for county employees. That's, that's no-no.
I agree.
That is going to weigh real soon, so the human resources administrator will be dealing with that too, setting it up at the clinic, getting all that done. They'll be the ones that, you know, if somebody fails a drug test, yea or nay. It doesn't need to be distilled down through a bunch of employees knowing what happened to a certain person.
Right, right.
So we're going to eliminate that, but that'll be part of the human resource administrator's job duties as well, and the attorney is working on that.
And again, when you say administrator, it could be an in-house employee or it could be contracted, it's kind of open at this point.
I've been talking, I've talked some with Tony, and I mean, he was thinking a firm at, at this point, but like you said, I think, you know, I'm sure he'll.
Yeah.
Be both of the.
The last time I talked to him, it was a firm deal.
Mm-hmm.
But I mean, we're going to, you know, pros and cons.
Yes, I would keep an open mind to it because you never know what may end up being better. I, from a cost standpoint, of course, would want it to be as cost neutral as we can get it. I will say that, you know, we've had a very large amount of legal expense in our budget that we have budgeted that, you know, maybe not all of that is needed now, if you're changing course on legal. I think we budget at least a hundred and sixty thousand under, you know, a previous arrangement.
Plus what we had to budget for ours, yeah.
Correct, I mean, it's probably a two hundred thousand dollar price tag. To me, if you are reorganizing, as you're saying with legal, there could be an opportunity to free up some of that, for instance, and carve that out and say, okay, instead of legal doing that anyway at high dollar, we're going to have a more efficient cost on HR specific at a lesser dollar. We could then transfer thirty thousand, I'm just throwing a number out there, thirty thousand, forty thousand, or whatever, on retain. on retainer for a firm, and it would cost the county nothing, 'cause we're just moving it around.
And that's...
So, that, you know, just throwing that out there, but...
That's kind of our goal, 'cause we got, Tony is going to be with us for, for six months to start out, to see the goods, the pros, the cons, what he likes, what we like, so and so forth, and, and the cost, what the cost is gonna be for the first six months. Because I can tell you right now, there's gonna be some additional costs for Tony, because we have issues inside this county that he is working on and is going to be working on, that has, is coming to a head, and it's gotta be cleared from the charts, and we're gonna do it this year. It's, it's a must, the things that's happened in the past. We're gonna get them off the table, and he's gonna be the person to facilitate that, whatever direction we need to go, but there is gonna be some expense right out the gate for him to do this, long overdue.
I think, Sam, that's very good for the liability factor on the county, to put it into, well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna undermine anybody, but it is professional hands who are responsible legally for their decisions and how they handle that department. So, I think it is, I, I think you've got our support.
Thank you. Then, on the next issue, and I don't know how this came to be, back when I was sheriff, we paid off the loan for the storage units, it was 82 or 87 thousand dollars, when we got the money crisis situation. The Sheriff's Office paid off the loan for the storage units. It's like 82, I couldn't remember. It was my understanding, and I can't find any paperwork or documents anywhere, that that money from the storage unit money coming in was going to be for the future jail project, because that's the reason we bought the storage unit project. Remember that? That's where we initially was going to build the jail. Paid off the loan, and that money coming in was gonna go to the new jail project. And somehow or another, that's not worth that, it's in the building department. We agreed at the last meeting, did we, Sheila? We, we talked about this at the last meeting, that the storage unit money will now revert back to the jail project effective immediately.
I thought you...
I agree with that.
Stored money, not all of it, of course, but pay Suzanne's wages.
You do. That, but that's a salary, that's an issue that the Council has to deal with.
It really shouldn't have been done that way.
But the money...
I said, we really shouldn't have been done that way. I mean, this was what it was originally for, was for the jail.
I know, that's reading...
So, you have committed for the enforcement officer position, and I think it's like right at 13,000 towards Suzanne's position as, as the administrator there in the building department, so...
I've, I've got the budget in front of me, and, and that's my only concern, not that that's the direction to take, or that you wanna take, but we have to have a plan to peel back the decision that was already made for the budget and how to fund everything. That's the part that I'm concerned about.
There's more to this than just taking the fund, this also will take all the money and that's end of. Because last night, the building inspector resigned.
Okay.
So, we don't have a building inspector. But you allocated, I don't know how much money you allocated for a code enforcement officer out of the, out of the storage unit money?
It was 22,367 for part-time for code enforcement.
But if you look at the building inspector's job description, I haven't got it, I didn't read through it, in the job description...
It includes code enforcement.
So, when we go to re-advertise for this building inspector, it's building inspector slash code enforcement officer. There's no, there's no need for two. Not, there's no need for. So, that 22,000 that you committed out of the storage unit money is not necessary. That's my opinion, that's something we're gonna be talking about, but we've kinda, we talked about this a little bit, but we'll talk about it more next Thursday, I'm sure it's not one of you there in the meeting, is because the job description clearly states what the building inspector does.
Correct, yeah. And, and the rate of pay was set based on that already being known.
Yes.
You know, so it's not a, you know, add-on more, because we're gonna have them do code enforcement. That's already a part of the job. But you're right, that would free up the 22, plus some, some FICA-related cost. That'll leave you another 20 or 19 that we need to somehow figure out, because about 10,000 of that goes towards the other position.
Yes.
And then there's just some miscellaneous other services, supplies, that kinda thing, which could probably be absorbed elsewhere. But I would just caution that in your, in your plan, you wanna make sure you have a plan for the budget and the money and dialing that back.
The only budget, the only that you have to budget for, if you're not budgeting code enforcement officer any longer.
Right.
You'll be budgeting whatever amount is for Suzanne's expenses for her salary.
And so, you would keep that the same, is what you're saying?
I, that's a Council decision.
Okay, okay.
Not a Commissioners. Because if the, the storage unit, now, we, we haven't, I've gotta talk to her yet too, and that's a more decision we're gonna make, somebody still has to oversee that, you know what I'm saying?
Correct.
The storage unit and stuff like that, and...
Doesn't happen by itself, right?
It doesn't happen by itself, so that, that is work in progress, but the only amount that you need to budget from the storage unit at this time is that part goes to her salary, until we've got that resolved, or got that scoped out in a very fish. The rest of that money can be utilized for the future jail project, 'cause as everybody knows here, and Paulie used that meeting, if our cap is $25 million for this jail project, we seen what the sewer line, the expense is gonna be, and the water line expense is gonna be, and I believe at your last council meeting or one before, and Anton brought it up, that $25 million is your cap. We're gonna need every dime we can get to fund this jail project, and we're behind this jail project 100%, and I mentioned that in our meeting, so we're gonna need every dime we can get to fund, help fund this jail project. And if we're bringing in $50,000 a year from the storage unit, the, that's $50,000 a year we can utilize. We're sitting on 160,000 now, if that's, does that sum it up, Sheila?
Yeah, and the other thing, too, is, is just the, the longer-term picture is, you know, do we need that, are we gonna even keep that property? You know, what's gonna happen with the old jail property? There was discussion earlier in some of our committee meetings about if you do take another site, then on the back end, you could sell that property and put it back onto the, the regular tax roll and, and, you know, get our money, our capital back, and put that down on the loan, or pay, pay the, pay a little towards the loan at that point. So, there's a lot of things that can be done with that. I don't think we should keep it, you know, forever, keep the property forever if we're in, not gonna end up using it for a jail. But for the interim, there's a cash balance, and we're pulling in some money, and that could be helpful for that project.
And that's where I want the money to go.
If you, if you take out the part-time, and then you just have the rest at the moment, then the budget goes from 41,000 down to 16,900. So, then, then you have to think about, okay, we've got basically 5,500 almost for things like supplies, other charges, printing, so another 55 of that is gonna be that stuff. And then what you're left with is the salary, you know, the contribution that's made to that, the other position. And so, it sounds like you're still needing to spend some time on that part and figuring out...
It'll be resolved.
The duties, and who's gonna do what, and the pay, and, and then let us know, I guess, 'cause, you know, we'll need to have some communication on that part in order to know what action to take.
We should have everything resolved on that February 6th meeting.
Okay.
I just think we need to utilize as much money as we can to go to the jail project. And that was the intention of the goal of that, when we paid that property loan off, was that money to go to the jail project.
Sam, I agree with you.
I agree.
And the question I had a few months back was, they was talking about this, this money from, from the storage units, and I kept wondering, when did we give them that money? And we, we never, because you're right, I think our original agreement sometime back was that money would be earmarked for this new jail project.
When we, when we paid off, when we brought the map, I don't know, when Bill had the roundtable discussion, you know, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, your memory's a lot better than mine, but I, I thought that was one of the reasons for us to pay, how to pay the loan off, is to make sure that that money got set aside for the new jail project, because that was our goal anyway, to build a jail there at that property. And it never transpired, and Matt and I was gonna need every dime they can get to, so I'll take this new jail project. Then, you know, with the other, this paid of the other position, we'll, we'll dissect all that out, too, and so on and so forth. One of the questions I was gonna ask, and I probably just talked over myself a little bit, when we advertise for, and this is stuff that me and Dave McGarry's gonna speak about in the coming days, we advertise in building inspector, code enforcement officer, like I say, the salary's already there for that person, so it's not like it's gonna be an increase, unless on your salary study, your wage study, if that position is to be moved up to whatever standard is gonna be, guilty worth one stone, take care of it, right then and be done with, that's one position that's already done, out of the way, if, if it's supposed to be moved up to a certain amount, I don't know what that is.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we're gonna, the rate's already the rate, there's nothing that changes with that, you just rehire somebody, and it's automatic. But the changing of the rates will not be something we do till the next budget year anyway.
But that's what...
And we still don't know what that is, if any, and we don't know the timeline, so...
So, that's what the advertisement of the job description is going to be.
Madam Chair, under the salary ordinance and confirmation summaries, I make a motion that we grant you the authority to sign those.
Motion made. Bye, Nick. Is there a second?
One second.
On the salary ordinance and confirmation summaries.
So, we're already skipping ahead here, okay. So, are we done with Commissioner Ravina?
I know.
I think your time is up, is what Nick's saying.
Nick's moving you on.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Sam.
All right, all those in favor?
Yes, legitimate.
Steve?
Yeah.
And just for your reference, these summaries include two different things. One is a complete inventory of the new year for every single employee in the system, and then the other is your normal monthly kinda handful of changes that occurred since December. So, those are all in there, and I really appreciate the Auditor's Office working on their end to double-check numbers and make sure, we, we were, I would say 95% accurate on everything, so we're very, very proud of that.
All right, moving on.
And one other quick thing for the Commissioners, capital improvement plan.
Yes.
Okay. This is a Commissioner function, but we have to have that in order to make sure there's no questions about the use of our edit funds, and I believe you are working on drafting an ordinance then for that. And doesn't have to be elaborate, it doesn't need to be some consultant-paid plan. It just needs to be a one-pager, the wherethes, and then I would recommend that you basically identify the current budgeted line items, or the things that are in the budget, as being the plan. And, the important part is the "and," refer to Indiana Code stating that any lawful use or lawful use of that funds as appropriated by the Council or the fiscal body, because the law has specific things you can spend it on, but then at the very end, it says, and everything else, basically, you can approve. It's important that the ordinance identifies that, because then later on, like in the case of the radio project, we're gonna need to do an appropriation, and then we don't need to redo the ordinance, 'cause you've already identified the everything else part, if that makes sense. So, just keep that in mind when you develop that, that ordinance.
Okay, elected officials and department head comments. Anybody have anything they wanna? Okay, public comment? Sheila, you have anything?
You have copies of the Centerstone annual reports that they provided for everyone, and the joint work session?
Yes.
I will need to add to, send notice to the paper. Other than that, I'm done.
And for the record, that joint work session, again, is on January the 23rd, which is a Thursday.
And 6:00, 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM here.
Just figured maybe we come together and kinda hash some of this stuff out.
I think that's an excellent idea.
The more we all be together, the better, I'll probably make it so.
All right, Council comments?
Welcome, Dan.
Yeah.
And Joe, good seeing ya. That's too bad, he had a work obligation, from what I understand, but, but Joe and Dan are both new, and we welcome them to the board?
Absolutely.
I think Daniel is people at this evening.
Ah, yeah, 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 you gotta point it to a board, right?
I want the Council, if there's anything Commissioners can do to help, and it's gonna be, you know, we're gonna work together as a team.
I appreciate that.
If you wanna help anywhere.
Absolutely.
That's the way that's gonna work.
I'm gonna give you both public praise during the snowstorm event. One of the things that was very helpful, which we haven't had, as far as I can remember we've ever had, Commissioner presence on social media, 'cause people wanna know what's going on, and they wanna hear that from people with authority. And it was so refreshing to see Dave posting things, Sam posting things about what's going on. I think people felt much more informed and comfortable, even though it was a tough situation for travel, but I think that's all people are looking for, is communications, reassurance, and kudos to you, I hope you continue using that. I hope you'll consider allowing the Highway Department to reactivate their Facebook page.
I sure hope.
We already talked about it.
Okay.
I sure hope Greg brings that to the next Thursday's meeting.
Oh, okay, well, and that, you just let me know and we'll reactivate it, 'cause I've been an admin for part of that, to keep it going, but once you make a decision, that would be a great thing to have back, so...
Greg, we'll see you next Thursday. Thanks to Greg and Jack White for all their input. Can you raise your hand if everything they know?
I make a move.
All right, is that it? All right, great.